Well, good afternoon. And welcome to May 2021. Today is May 3rd and we're back at it again. It's three o'clock in the afternoon. It's our first meeting in May and we are really honored that you would join us today. And I hope that you find today interesting if nothing else, but hopefully profitable as well. So thank you all for being with us. Couple of things we're gonna do before we get underway. It's our tradition that we're gonna do a couple of things. We're gonna have the pledge. We're also gonna have a prayer. This is called a solemnizing prayer. It's a, I guess, a legal term. That, that means the solemnizing prayer is for us, the commissioners. It's not for you guys. You're welcome to listen in if you like. And so what we do here, we seek wisdom because we don't have all the answers. And so we take this real seriously. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started. And if our chaplain will come forward, good to have you here with us today.
Commissioners.
Lord, thank for the stay provided for us and thank for our county commissioners, dear Lord. Privilege to be able to know them and thank for the work they do for this county, Lord, and the preparation they make, Lord, not only here but behind the scenes, dear Lord. Pray you give them the wisdom they need for this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good to have a little rain today and wish it just wouldn't come all at once. All right, uh, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I do have three items to add to consent, but I'm, I'm gonna, I need to ask the board to add them to board action because they're still not complete. So you would be voting on something that you don't yet have. So in the next 15 minutes, it should be complete.
Can we, can we, uh, Jay, can we just put off voting on consent and get through and then come back to consent?
Come back to consent.
Yeah. Is that all right?
That's fine. I mean, it's-
Do they consent or do they need action?
They all need action, but it's, it's just the part of grant, the budget amendment and the revised cost estimates. But I want to make sure you have the right documents in front of you.
But let, let's just-
I amend the consent, amend the consent and then skip through the approval of the consent and go through the regular agenda.
But let's, let's just, I mean, they won't take any time, really.
No, they won't.
Let's just add them as item D, E, and F. No, no, no. I'm sorry. As item, uh, uh, 6A, B, and C. Is that okay? And we'll just blow through them.
Sure.
All right. 6A, B, and C. Is, is there anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Uh, then do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda? If ever say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the minutes were approved for us, the April 19th minutes. So motion to approve those minutes, please. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then we'll go ahead and approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve items A through K. All right. Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then we have a proclamation for law enforcement week. Mr. Law Enforcement Officer, let's see. Mike, Mike, would you? Yeah, so. Get your breath.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologize for being late. Just got off work. I'll make this proclamation in form of motion. Whereas a 1962 President John F. Kennedy signed a presidential proclamation that set aside May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day. And the week of May 10th through 16th is National Police Week. And whereas members of the law enforcement agencies in Rowan County play an essential role in the safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all of our citizens. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. And whereas members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duties to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas law enforcement officers, past and present, have faithfully and loyally rendered a dedicated service to this county and have established for themselves an edible and enduring reputation to preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, be it proclaimed that Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 10th through 14, 2021, as Law Enforcement Week. Now therefore be it further proclaimed that Rowan County Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of Rowan County to observe May 14th, 2021, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of, of our fallen heroes. This is the third day of May 2021.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Mike made that in the form of a motion. We have a second. All right. Mike, on behalf of our board, we'd like to thank you for the service that you do to Mecklenburg County. And, um, you know how we feel about you and we appreciate what you do for this community and also for Mecklenburg County. I don't know how you do it, but you have our highest regard and for our sheriff department, our sheriff and our deputies. Thank for being with us today and always. And you are in our constant prayers. And, uh, crazy, crazy times today. Um, but in this community, we value you and we value our law enforcement folks. We support you 100%. So thank you from the bottom of our heart for what you do for us. We appreciate you. Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Speaking of praying for our officers, Jim?
Um, we have a proclamation in here for, to establish May as Shield a Badge with Prayer Awareness Month. And, um, uh, for the Rowan County Board of Commissioners. Uh, whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer Program works to affirm the commitment of Rowan County law enforcement officers and encourages citizens' awareness and appreciation for these officers. And whereas the program invites citizens to commit to prayer for an officer every day for one year and to send birthday cards and notes to, of thanks to these officers. And whereas through the generosity of individuals, businesses, and churches that have donated services and fundraisers, 10,500 Bibles, 3,700 Shield of Badge Bible Promise Books, and 11,150 New Testaments have been purchased to be given away. And whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer Program began in 1995 in Rowan County by Chaplain Michael Taylor and has begun to expand statewide, reaching out to other counties, municipalities, colleges, hospitals, correctional facilities, 9/11 communications, probation officers, animal control officers, state highway patrol troopers, fire departments, clerk of court employees, magistrates, judges, district attorney offices, community, uh, excuse me, county commissioners, sheriffs, and attorneys. And whereas through the dedication and travels of Chaplain Taylor, counties from across the state are receiving encouragement and training for chaplains. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby establish the month of May as Shield of Badge with Prayer Awareness Month, this third day of May 2021.
All right, that's a motion. We have a second. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chaplain Taylor, can you come forward? We'll give this to you. I, I noticed the list of, of organizations that y'all are praying for is growing and I, I noticed you put attorneys there.
But they were last.
It was last. So this, this was in, this was in no specific order, Jason, not even paying attention to us. It's a no sp- never mind. Not even listening. Come, come on forward. Um, you know, you pray for us every two weeks. All right, we have one more. Commissioner Chris.
I will make this in form of a motion for the proclamation for Exercise is Medicine Month. Whereas May 2021 is Exercise is Medicine Month. And whereas all citizens are encouraged to speak with their physicians about how physical activity and exercise may help treat or prevent numerous chronic conditions such as hypertension, cardiac disease, and diabetes. And whereas all health providers are encouraged to talk to their patients about the health benefits of exercise and to strongly recommend that their patients engage in appropriate exercise. And whereas regular moderate intensity exercise has cur- has curative and protective health benefits. And whereas the health benefits of physical activity and exercise can do so much to improve the quality of life for everyone. And whereas a healthier populace means cost savings, greater participation in the workforce, and other benefits to society at large. And whereas regular physical activity and exercise is indeed a powerful prescription with potential to improve the health of all Americans. And whereas the American College of Sports Medicine calls on health organizations, physicians, and other professionals, regardless of specialty, to assess, to advocate for, and to review every patient's physical activity program during every comprehensive visit. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Exercise is Medicine Month in Rowan County and encourages all citizens to participate in activities and observances relating to Exercise is Medicine Month in the interest of better health and quality of life for all, this third day of May 2021. And our interim health director is here and I would love to have a picture with her if we could.
Like a mirror.
I know.
Modern day mirror.
I know. And I will say that our county, Rowan County, has received awards in the past for our exercise promotion programs. And, uh, we just encourage our employees to continue to participate in those. We have a little incentive to do that and also to pass that on to others and take them for a walk.
Good.
Second.
Good job, Coach.
You cracked me up. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's go out here. We'll, we'll get a picture. We should, uh, Michael, when you're done with her, we're gonna get one of you. Is that all right? Uh, anyone for public comment? Nope. Okay. Move on to item four. Shane, Mr. Shane Stewart.
Shane, can you remind me which one is first?
That one right there where your cursor is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This request here will be our second permit to exceed the noise ordinance. And it comes from Francisco Castro for property at 760 Oak Mountain Road. I believe that's his father's property. You see here on the screen, it's about a 15 acre tract in blue. The permit would be for what's deemed a Mother's Day celebration gathering. And it would be this coming Saturday, May 8th, from, uh, 2:00 PM to 11:30. And it's got a description of that event in your packet, but it's, it's gonna have some live music and what's termed free food and beverage for anticipated 90 guests. Per the applicant, this is an event open to the public, which is one of the qualifiers for the noise ordinance. Um, it did sound like more of a small neighborhood gathering or maybe friends, but it's been advertised on social media and flowers about town. So and of course, the applicant indicated they're still shooting for that 90 target, but they have space for additional onsite. Nonetheless, that is the request. Sort of a basic site plan here that they provided, but at the end of Oak Mountain, it becomes a little private road here entering into the Castro property. And there'd be a stage set up here. They do have some, uh, portable toilets and also some parking area here. Now, in the aerial from 18 Sullivan, it's all wooded, but I would say the majority of this area here, or at least a good portion, has been cleared. So it's open right now. And just two shots, it's really hard to capture much of that site, but as you leave the state maintained portion of Oak Mountain and enter the site, this is just a private driveway serving, I think, three lots. And as you get to the end of the road, you come to a gate and all this has been cleared. From this image, I believe there has been grassy put out. I've mentioned that to the owner that they are subject to the erosion control ordinance. May have got a little, little egregious there with the, the clearing, but nonetheless, they are gonna have ground covered down. So just a few sort of rapid points here. Did talk with environmental health and if the vent is truly has free food and beverage, they are not subject to environmental health laws. It's not for sale. And we talked to the applicant. They mentioned that there was interest of having multiple different events on the property that has to have a temporary use by this board. Depending on the, the number and type, it may even require um, additional zoning approval by this board. But for the purpose of this, we're talking about one event. I don't know what they may have in mind, but we'll share that and make sure that it's clear that it is only to cover, um, this event. Any future may require additional approval. So typically also with our, um, 10 criteria, there's a reference in here. Usually these are fundraising events. This is not. They did have one in November 2020 per the 911 call where they had, um, music. They come out and it was supposedly some benefit for a family member, I think, that was injured in an accident or something. So I don't think this is, uh, for that benefit except for, you know, the mothers. But with that said, the original, when the applicant came in a month ago, it was indicated that they had an event in March that deputies responded to and they told them to turn the music down. And there was no 911 call that we could find on record, but we sent notice to 13 property owners, posted a sign, which nobody could have saw anyway, but the, the letters did not generate any calls to the office. So, and from this you can see, you've got flanked on the rear. It accesses Shoreford Road, but this is the, the Ag Research property. And there's about 111 residences in here and primarily the notices went out to those within 300 feet of the site. Although this is not a hearing per se, it does, there is public comment that can be offered by that. And, um, the applicant, I hope, is on the Zoom call. He mentioned he would be. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, Shane, could you go back to your hand drawn site gap here? My question to the applicant is, if you've got all the houses to, what would that direction be? South?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Well, anyway, okay. That's where the houses are, right down the box. And the stage is actually, and, um, the speakers and everything are aimed at the houses. My question is, is why we can't, why you can't, um, take and turn that so your sound goes to the back of the property where there's no holes? And I think that that would be a really good neighborly thing to do. Uh, especially since you've cleared the trees where the neighbors' property lines are too.
If you look at the legend here, as the applicant drew, this is the stage and then the direction of music. So they actually do have it aimed to this ag property, this wooded. And I believe that was one of the things mentioned. The, the previous event, I think it did face the other direction. So.
Okay, so they have turned it around.
Correct.
Oh, okay. So-
According to this drawing.
The cleared area is where parking and then the seating is on the other side. Is that what you're saying?
I don't know necessarily if they have seating. I think it's just a large gathering place. Um, I mean, again, the-
As long as, as long as the sound is going the opposite direction of the neighbors, I think that's a very fine, very fine thing.
Per this indication here, it appears as such.
Okay, great.
Mr. Stewart, we do have, um, Francisco Castro on the call. If, uh, if you have any questions you'd like to direct to him, he is, he is on the call.
All right, uh, Mr. Castro, would you like to add anything?
Uh, can you hear me? I think I'm muted.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Uh, yeah, no, I don't really have nothing to add about it, but yeah, about that noise, that was the case. We did. The first time we had a complaint, the music was directed south towards the other residents, but we have decided to like, uh, move the stage so the sound is amplified towards the back of the property, towards the NC State Research Centers.
I think in your application, I read that the, that it was gonna be until 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
But in the, um, the planning department's presentation, it said 11:30, Shane.
I thought it was 11 o'clock when I brought it on there. I thought that's the time I put it, but I'm not too sure. Could have been 11:30, but I thought it was 11.
The application in the packet says 11:30. So we took the greater of the two because his event description says 11. So I wanted to include that to cover that 30 minutes and it could be addressed in this setting as opposed to previously when I'd sent out the notice.
Is 11, is 11 o'clock okay with you, Mr. Castro?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. I mean, it's not like a, uh, party, you know, it's more of a, just a gathering. Usually everybody's gone by 11.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Um, now we'll make, uh, we'll open the floor to anyone who would like to, from the general public who'd like to speak on this. Anyone here? Let's talk about this. All right, then we'll, uh, close the floor and commissioners. Uh, yeah, I, if he's okay with 11, then I'd make 11. Moms need to be in bed earlier than that, don't they? This one. All right, um. Anyone want to make a motion to approve P E O two dash 21 with an 11 o'clock timeframe, 11 o'clock? All right. Uh, do we have a second?
Thank-
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Shane. Uh, FSW O one dash two one.
All right. These are not as common, but every once in a while, the board sees family subdivision waivers. And on page one of the staff report, it had a tiny bit of background information. About five years ago, we made a change to the subdivision ordinance. It's always historically been immediate family where staff has that ability to approve a request that is a conveyance and new lot creation between immediate families. So if they're a little bit distant outside that, um, that branch, then of course this board, or if it's a large family, being more than the default four lots, this board can approve those waiver requests. So we've got a family. The Boston's got to know real well. Super nice family. I talked to several of them. I couldn't draw you the family tree, but they've all been extremely kind and very patient through this process, which, um, the report and some of the attachment go into a little bit more about the right of way and stuff that was talked about. I'll leave that out in case the board has any questions, but the purpose of this request here. Let's see. April, how do I maximize that? Thank you. Take a look at the screen here. We've got this large tract. This is about 16 acres of Boston Oaks. Now this road is about a half mile from this point here on Crooked Oak. This is a private road. And then Crooked Oak Lane is private as well, going back to Unity Church. So four, one mile approximate off the main road. But the Boston family here, Christina Brown Foskey, she is a granddaughter of Mitchell and Dorothy Boston. And there's a letter of intent in your packet, so that goes into a little bit more of the detail. So this waiver would be a, allow staff to approve the division, which this is a proposal here from Ms. Foskey. The lot three would go to Tracy. His first cousin. He owns the lot, right? Let me make sure I got that right. Yes, Tracy and Wendy, first cousin right here. They've got a house now, but, and then his dad, Delbert, owns this land and then he would get this lot here. No, no immediate plans to build, but wants to keep it in the family. These two lots would go to second cousins, which are named Charles and Terron Roush and Dana and Rocky. I think that would be Rocky Two Boston, because there's another Rocky across the road. Oh, good deal. Um, so all these folks here are either grandchildren or great grandchildren of Mitchell and Dorothy. So this whole process, this recognizes that, um, that right. Let's go through a few things. I thought it was very interesting. We talk a lot about private roads at the staff level and I, you know, historically, the county manager's office will get calls about, you know, private roads and maintenance and don't we maintain roads? And no, we don't. They're either public by the state, municipal, or other. But Crooked Oak Lane is in excellent shape. This is an image here from Unity Church right off looking into the site. And this, again, is a half mile to get to Boston, but no visible potholes, drainage issues, scours, uneven surfaces, and really excellent shape. And here's Boston, the turn over here to the right. Here's Boston, the turn over here to the right. And at that location, I will say, and of course, it goes from 20 to 22 feet in width. And as you enter Boston, it definitely narrows. It's not quite as good, but for a private road, it's still in good shape. Maybe 10 feet wide. There's places that are 12 to 14. There's a few spots here and there, but by and large, it's in pretty good shape. Once you get to the subject track here to the left and look up, this is the dead end of Tracy's house. And then looking back in the other direction, back towards Crooked Oak, you can see the road condition. So, all of that looked really good. And staff went ahead and just notified everybody along the road. There's more than, well, I guess there's 11 property owners, but 15 parcels, I believe. So, everybody kind of knows what's going on. Again, I talked about the right of way a little bit more in the report and the attachments. There's a small section right here that the family's been working on and provides a removal of a cloud that could be there. But nothing else that should give everybody peace of mind. So, didn't really receive any phone calls other than, I think, one family member and the folks I've already talked with. There's some represented in this room. And I think Ms. Foskey is on Zoom. Of course, I'm glad to answer questions too.
Question for Shane. All right. Ms. Foskey, are you on the phone? Is there anything you'd like to talk about?
Yes, I'm here.
Are you sure you want to live around family?
Well, I'm the one that's selling it.
Okay. Well, that's good. Well, well.
But I do live around the other side of the family.
Well, that's, that's good for you. That's a good thing these days. Anything you'd like to add to this at all?
No.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, sure.
Ms. Foskey, I was just curious as to whether at some point, there were gonna be houses built on these parcels. I believe that two of the people that are purchasing are planning to build houses at some point in time. And then the third part, which connects to Tracy's, he's not planning to build anytime soon. And do you know if the land perks?
I don't know.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. Is there anyone that's here with us physically that would like to speak? One way or the other? No? Okay. All right, then, do we have a motion to approve FSW 01-21?
So moved.
Right, and Jim, motion of second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, guys. All right, we got a few board appointments. Suzanne Ramsey applied for a one-year term on the Agriculture Advisory Board. Motion of second to approve her.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dangerous Dog Appeals Board Cheryl Peavy applied for reappointment. Motion of second.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. On the Health Board, Patricia Yost resigned from the registered nurse seat. And so, Derry Caldwell, we keep moving her around. It's like musical chairs for her. She is currently filling a seat for a member of the general public. However, she is also a registered nurse, so we're gonna move her to this registered nurse seat, and that'll expire December 31st, 2021. So, do we have a motion to approve that in a second? All right, in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have two openings. And Judy, you have motions.
Yes, I would, I would move that we appoint Mary Pons and Dr. Tony Watling to, for the two vacant positions.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are good appointments. Former mayor and our new school superintendent. So, good quality appointments. Thank you. Let's see, the board will need to designate which applicant will fill the general public seat that was filled by Ms. Caldwell. So, are you prepared to do that, Judy?
Yeah, we'll have Mary Pons fill that seat.
Okay, Mary, so everyone okay with that? Okay. All right, Lot Volunteer Fire Department David McKnight and Jody Kerr applied to fill two seats, become vacant on June 30th. Motion of second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mount Mitchell Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners Barbara Simmons, Michael Deal, and Eddie Bearden applied for reappointment. Motion of second.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rock and Bearish Community College Board of Trustees, you all received a recommendation from the president. Dr. Carol Spalding, they'd like to reappoint Jean Dixon. Do we have a motion of second?
So moved.
All right, Judy and Jim, motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
City of Salisbury Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment, Tim Norris applied for reappointment. Motion of the second.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Craig, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, nope, we gotta go back now.
Oh, that's right, did you consent?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, we'll go back to items six, A, B, and C.
Okay. Would have been consent, but the items weren't ready. And the application is due today. The grant writer has been working today. The first item to approve would be for the board to approve the revised cost estimate for the park. And that is the second page in the PDF that I just emailed everyone. Some of the changes are related to, we had $70,000 for signs. That's been reduced to $7,000. The contingency was 15%. You're only allowed to have 5% for a part of grant. And then we had a 12-month escalation cost built in. You're not allowed to have that with part of. And there may have been a few other changes, but that was the, in large part, the biggest changes on the cost estimate. So, if the board approves this, they'll be approving a revised cost estimate. It's not necessarily a whole lot less than the prior one because we added the engineering fees. For example, the total cost of the one you approved is a little, little lower. Back in March was $543,000 approximately. And then this one for phase one is $437,000. So, there is some reduction. However, we think the cost is gonna escalate anyway. We're just not allowed to put that into a grant application.
Okay, so then, I've got, I've got the email. So, let me read this into the record. So, this is for Woodley Park Master Plan. On March 15th, 2021, the board approved the Woodley, Woodley Park Master Plan. This consent item, or this item is to approve the revised cost estimate. So, the motion will be to approve the revised Woodley Park revised cost estimate. Authorize the chairman of the board to sign the attached part of grant application for the Woodley Community Park Phase 1 and 2. As of today, the total amount of grant application is $354,346. County match will be approximately $354,346. This will require a budget amendment of approximately $75,346, whereas there is current, currently approximately $279,000 budgeted for the Woodley Park. So, the motion will be approve the part of Woodley Community Park Phase 1 and 2 grant application in the amount of $34,345. Let me start over. As of today, the total amount of the grant application is $354,346. I'm gonna start over again. I'm sorry. Approve the part of Woodley Community Park Phase 1 and 2 grant application in the amount of $354,346 for the matching county contribution of the same, and authorize the chairman of the board of commissioners to sign the application. We have a motion to approve that.
Yeah.
Our motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I make a motion, we authorize the county manager to move $75,346 to the appropriate line item for the Woodley Park project from a line item identified by the manager and finance officer and carry over the $279,000 and $354,346 total in the upcoming budget.
That, that's an error. It, it should read $279,000 and $75,346 for a total of 354.
Correct.
That's my fault, I'm sorry.
So, I'll make that as a motion. Say it. All right, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other motion?
Was there a motion to approve the revised cost estimate?
We have a motion to approve the revised cost estimate.
So moved.
All right, motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Jim, anything then?
Nope.
Okay.
You got it there. Numbers are a little different than what I had spoken with you commissioners about, and I apologize, but I did not realize of all of the changes that were going on today when I spoke to you previously.
Well, that's good. This would be a good project for that side of the county and something that they and all of us can be real proud of. Anything else on that area? All right, next.
That's all.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye. Hold on.
Those were the three items.
Yep.
All right.
Just hang on.
All in, oh, you had some.
Yeah. I just wanted to raise an issue as we prepare for the budget work session. We have what could be a crisis over at DSS in our Child Protective Services Division. We've had a couple of people that have left, which have left us really understaffed. So, I'm gonna bring that to our budget work. Yes, but we are also in need of additional.
We have a motion of second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.